Good afternoon, this is a regular meeting of the Cameron County Commissioners Court. Today is the 3rd of February 2011, it's 2:00 PM. As we do all meetings, we will start by recognizing a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance to the US Flag and the Texas Flag. I'd like to ask our Civil Counsel Bruce Hodge to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance to those two when the time comes. Take off your coat and get ready. Bruce?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Thank you. Do I hear a motion to go into Executive Session?
So moved.
Move by Commissioner Gatzah, second by Commissioner Benavides. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Adam Carries to discuss the following four items. A, confer with Commissioners Court Legal Counsel concerning civil service appeal at Nesto Barajas versus Cameron County in accordance with Code Section 551.071, 1A, B, and 2. Item B, confer with Commissioners Court Legal Counsel concerning Dora Torres and others versus Omar Lucio and others in US District Court in accordance with Code Section 551.071, 1A, and B. Item C, confer with Commissioners Court Legal Counsel concerning lease issues on park managers' residence at Andy Bowie Park and Dolph Tom May Park pursuant to Code Section 551.071, 2. Item D, confer with Commissioners Court Legal Counsel concerning auditing issues in the administration operation of the Justice of the Peace Offices pursuant to Code Section 551.071, 2. Thank you. Do I hear motion to move out of Executive Session?
So moved.
Move by Commissioner Gatzah.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Hernandez. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Adam Carries. Item A, confer with Commissioners Court Legal Counsel concerning civil service appeal. Do I hear motion to acknowledge report of counsel and proceed under the terms and conditions as discussed? Do I mention the amount of settlement? Okay. Do I hear motion?
So moved.
By Commissioner Benavides. Do I have a second?
Second.
By Commissioner Hernandez. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Adam Carries. Item B, Dora Torres. Do I hear motion to acknowledge report of counsel and proceed under the terms and conditions as discussed?
So moved.
Move by Commissioner Hernandez, second by Commissioner Gatzah. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Adam Carries. Item C, confer with Commissioners Court Legal Counsel concerning lease issues on park managers' residence. Do I hear motion to acknowledge report of counsel? And Mr. Mendez, and proceed under the terms and conditions as discussed? Move by Commissioner Gatzah. Do I have a second? By Commissioner Benavides. Any further discussion? All those in favor please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Adam Carries. Item D, confer with Commissioners Court Legal Counsel concerning auditing issues in the admin and operation of JP Offices. Do I hear motion to acknowledge report of counsel? And proceed under the terms and conditions as we discussed? Move by Commissioner Hernandez, second by Commissioner Gatzah. Any discussion? All those in favor please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Adam Carries. Public comment? Item, Presentation by Terry Cr-- did Terry make it?
He expressed his request.
Okay. Do I hear motion? Well, there is no motion. I have a B, Presentation of Resilience, Mr. Bob Corneglason. Is he here?
No, I asked him.
Okay. Pass.
I asked him to not be here because of the weather.
Of the weather. Okay. Item C, Consent Items, 5A through a whole bunch. Are there any items any member of the court wished to take out and discuss separately? I've been asked to table item G, item I, and Triple O. Those will be tabled. Any other items any member of the court?
Triple O. Yes, hold on. Table Triple O, okay.
Triple L?
To table or discuss?
Oh, I'm sorry. To discuss.
We'll take that out, okay? Item Double D?
Double?
To discuss.
Item Triple K to discuss.
G to discuss?
Hold on, hold on, guys.
This gonna be tabled?
Oh, it's gonna be tabled?
G?
G is tabled? Yeah. That's one of the ones I was asked to table by you. G?
But whatever I want to talk about, I'm just kidding.
Which is the one before?
Triple K.
Triple K, yes.
To discuss?
To discuss.
Anything else? Do I hear motion to approve all items in the consent with the exception of the ones that'll either be tabled or we've pulled out to discuss separately?
So moved.
Move by Commissioner Gatzah, second by Commissioner Benavides. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Carries. First item to discuss, Triple D, consideration authorization to add to evaluation committee for the following RFQ, energy efficient wind turbines and solar lights. Triple D?
Double D.
Oh, Double D, I'm sorry.
Double D.
So Triple D then is approved.
Double D.
Double D, consideration authorization to accept two buildings to be built on Cameron County Juvenile Justice Department property located 2310 West Business Highway 77. Who pulled that one?
Sophie?
Double D?
No. Sophie?
I requested that be pulled. I wanted to advise the court that there is nothing in there about any operating costs that will be incurred or how they're going to be funded or that's a contingency out there that we don't know what it is. I don't--
Are those those buildings that the students build and then they, like projects?
They're to be built, is my understanding.
They're projects, right?
Right. Of course, they will need, I would presume that they would need utilities established and things. I don't know what the funding source is for that.
Utilities to do the work?
No, to make them operational, to occupy them.
Well, no, I think they build them and then move them out. Is that, are those the ones?
Well, no, those are to be used on site.
Oh, these are--
They're gonna be built behind the boot camp, I believe, or in that compound.
Okay. Because I know they have projects that they build them and then I guess they sell them or--
No, they usually is like a third-party agency that pays for the materials and then they give them to the needy families.
Right. Well, this is to be built, so they will, it's my understanding that it will be used at the juvenile detention building. I just want to advise the court that I don't know what the funding source is going to be for utilities, you know, to be, for the operational cost of this facility.
When are they scheduled to be ready for operation?
I don't have anything on the agenda item other than the first agenda notice.
And it doesn't say what they're to be used for?
Yes, science labs.
Shouldn't that be taken, have been taken into consideration?
Before they--
Have they considered building them?
I'm sure, and I'm sure that juvenile department knows, but--
And maybe they have accepted--
It's possible they do and they did have, they do have it funded. I just don't, I wanted to let the court know that we do not have that information.
So they haven't brought it to this court before today?
I have not seen it.
When they planned it.
Do I hear motion to table and have them come back and explain it to--
So moved.
Move by Commissioner Sanchez, second by Commissioner Gatzah. Any further discussion? All those in favor please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Adam Carries. Triple K, consideration, yeah, consideration and approval of, for Cameron Park Substation Office to be assigned to Constable Precinct 2, Pete Avila Jr. for the proper and daily use for running a constable's office with four deputies and a secretary. Commissioner, you pulled that one out?
Yeah, I pulled that one. The reason I pulled it, I'm in, having, trying to have a conversation with the District Attorney. It's my understanding that he's gonna be moving out of that building in the next few months. And I have a meeting set up with the Sheriff to talk about doing a police substation, or a Sheriff's Department substation and slash constable's substation where they both use it, like a public safety building, so to speak.
So what do you want to do with this, then?
I think we need to table this right now because--
Do I hear motion to table? By Commissioner Hernandez, do I have a second?
Second.
By Commissioner Gatzah, and then I guess bring it back, have it placed back on the agenda when Commissioner Hernandez is already ready to go with it. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Adam Carries. Triple L, Administrative Office Staff, Building Maintenance Director, Marta Nevada traveled to Austin, Texas on 2/15, 2/16 to attend the RS Means Facilities Construction Estimating Seminar. Who pulled that?
Judge, I think, I did. I think the only thing that's missing here is that, is Marta here? I think he's gonna be using his own vehicle and they didn't include the mileage to be paid on this. Robert, is that so?
That is correct. We were, you know, contemplating whether he used county vehicle or his own vehicle. Either one, you know, we'd find the funding out of the--
Just in order to see if we approve that.
The correct--
Why don't we just approve it subject to if he uses his personal vehicle, he gets reimbursed mileage. If he uses a county vehicle, he does not.
So moved.
Okay? Thank you. Whoa. I love the stereo effect here. Move by Commissioner Hernandez, second by Commissioner Gatzah. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Adam Carries. Action items, budget amendments, line item transfers under salary schedules. Marta?
Judge Commissioners, you have the budget amendments that were placed in front of you. Page 1 and page 2 and page 3 are regular line item transfers. Page 2, the line item transfers, you have one budget amendment for the jail division and we are taking $10,700 from small tools and putting it into equipment. That is to pay for the water softener that is needed on the heater that was just put up in the jail. And the next budget amendment, the line item transfer is for the Operation Stone Garden. That is moving excess funds into the equipment line item so they can purchase vehicles that were approved at the last meeting. The next one is a HIDA budget based on grant-funded. The funds are being reallocated. You have another one, the last page, on page 3 on the line item transfers, is lab salaries within the parks budget that are being moved to accommodate expenditures that are needed in connection with the tolls, the toll collection system that's being implemented at the parks.
How much is that?
It's a total of $33,000.
Is that gonna cover all the cost or?
That's gonna cover additional costs that were not budgeted for with, for supplies and equipment that is needed for the collection system that they have now.
New system.
Yes. The, the next, the following pages are the budget amendments. You have a budget amendment for $100,000--
Before you move on real quick--
Sure.
And is that the reason we have those lab salaries? We haven't hired people so we can use those salaries to pay for the new equipment that is needed?
No, I believe those are positions that either are vacant or have not been filled right now, but they do have lab salaries right now. Did you want to ask Parks as to the lab salaries that they have?
Well, no, I was just curious, because I don't think at the beginning of the year it was budgeted for this new equipment. I think that's something new, right?
That is, that is a project that started last fiscal year. I believe it started in maybe October or November of 2010, last May, September, and they have not finished it. And we did not anticipate that they were gonna need these additional supplies or equipment to finalize.
So there was a budget for a certain amount.
Yes.
We exceeded the budget and now we're using the lab salaries for this.
For this. Correct.
But will the lab salaries that are there finish it off or we're still gonna be over budget?
We anticipate that it should finish it off.
So then we can, if those positions are vacant, we can now fill them?
Yes. These are lab salaries up to right now.
Right, and that's what I'm saying.
Yes.
Do we need to keep those positions vacant to finish paying off whatever we need or can we hire people next week?
Yes, salaries are salaries, yes.
Okay. So if Javier's out there, hire people.
(laughing).
If needed?
If needed. Well, yeah, I mean, if we have a position that's vacant, it probably needs to be filled.
Correct.
Okay.
Yes. The next two pages are actual budget amendments. There's a budget amendment realizing $100,320 of secure placement funds that have been received for the juvenile department and we are setting up the budget for that, for that funding that they have received. The next page is a budget amendment for road and bridge. That is setting up the budget for the $80,000 that was received from the bank to, the First National Bank donation to resurface or to finish off that road that is needed for some subdivision. And the $132,000 that is budgeted in there, a fund balance to be used, that is for the Corning Gate Road project that was approved as well for road and bridge. The next budget amendment is for emergency management. That's $116,000 of revenue. State grant is gonna be coming in and that is setting up the budget for the equipment. Then the Lauletis Park receipt has a donation of $2,500 that is sitting in fund balance and that is setting up the budget for it in office supplies and building maintenance. And the last budget amendment there is $15,000 UTMB grant that is, that was received by the parks and that is setting up the budget for that as well.
You know, when we get a donation, that was a Red Men, Red Crow, whatever--
Yes, last fiscal year.
You know, why, why do we wait so long to recognize it as a transfer into a budget? They gave us a check the day they were here.
They gave us a check and it was set up then as a donation in last year's, but it was not used, so it rolled into fund balance. And this year we have it in fund balance, so we're taking it from fund balance--
So it doesn't--
Putting it back.
Putting it in as a donation, yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Because, you know, we assured them that we would use it for something that we would give them credit for.
Yes. So it's, it's a donation that's being realized and used this year. And then you have a salary schedule for Hyda.
Red Dirt, how do you read it?
I'm sorry?
Red Dirt? Red Men, Red Crow?
Yes, Red Crow, I think was--
Yeah, well, they're, they're needing red dirt over there, so.
The part?
For the part.
Jill?
You also have a salary schedule for HIDA that is grant-funded and it's a salary schedule that is in effect for a fiscal year 2011 for your approval.
You recommend their approval, Martha?
Yes.
Do I hear motion to approve--
Well, I have one question.
Discussion continued?
On JP 4, there shows contractual for $1,680 and only $1,073 there. What is that? Is there a new contract or what's?
JP 4, is that on page?
Page 2?
Page 2.
The top?
JP 4, we have contractual. We're taking $607 and reallocating it to office supplies and to equipment rental. Yes. And contractual is something that is set up in there for copier rental and things of that sort that they may have.
And they're not gonna need that anymore?
No, actually, that's contractual. That is for, in case they need to get an interpreter or something for their, for, when they have courts or things of that sort. And they, there was an amendment, I believe, that was approved, a contract that was approved for Constable Precinct 4 last, last time we met because they needed to upgrade their copier. So it is reverting an additional $407 to cover the contract that they brought to court last, at the last meeting.
But this is for the JP Court?
Yes, JP 4.
So they're sharing a copier?
This is, I don't know if they're sharing a copier or not.
Because you said constable at the last meeting.
I, yeah, I was a constable, not this one. (laughing) I stand corrected, yes.
So if we move that money out and then later they need an interpreter, they're not gonna have money to do that?
They will have $1,073 left in there to use.
Okay.
Because we're reducing it from $1,680 to $1,073.
$1,073?
Yes.
Okay.
And when we, when we do these budget amendments, we review them and at, when these budget amendments are being presented, then we review last year's history, so we have an idea as to what they used or what they had to use in, in last fiscal year since that year has already closed.
Okay. Martha, but just, just to make it clear, though, you don't, you don't arbitrarily just make the budget amendments. Is it, is it because they, they ask you to do it?
It's because they ask us to do it, yes.
Right. And then the only reason I ask is there's a new judge in that precinct and maybe they're making a change of money that they're gonna need later, and that's what I'm saying.
Right, right.
Maybe wise to look into it.
Mm-hmm.
I'm a new kid on the block, so ask a lot of questions.
That's how they learn, these guys learn.
That's fine, Commissioner.
I'm learning.
You recommend?
Yes.
Okay, now do I hear a motion to approve--
So moved.
--budget amendments by Commissioner Sanchez, second by Commissioner Benavides. Any further discussion? All those in favor please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Adam Carries, claims.
I have payroll dated February the 4th for $1,653,752 warrants, number 252167 through 252678, warrants number 252682 through 252833. There's also electronic fund transfers for medical claims for $285,657.47 for your approval.
Martha?
I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Martha, I just have a couple of questions. On the, on one of the warrants, it's on page 12, and I've just, my question is where you have ACH unidentified, and that's warrant number 252422, encumbered trial release. There were several items that I noticed that had unidentified ACH. You know, is there a reason why, why you're identifying it like that or is it a miscoding?
Actually, when we request funds from the funding agency, be it the state or the federal, they will sometimes deposit the funds in the first Cameron County account that they see on their schedule. And the electronic fund transfer, the ACH payment gets credited in the incorrect fund. We get a notice from the state or the feds that, hey, we're sending you this money, so we start looking for the money. We go on the website and we find out where the money was deposited. We verify with, with the Treasurers where the money is sitting, if it's been credited, received. And then we will, the money, since they are unidentified in the fund they are being received, will go credited in the unidentified account because--
But this is a disbursement.
This is a disbursement, yes.
Right.
Then we will write a warrant from that fund--
Okay.
--transferring the money to the funds where it needs to go.
Okay. And then on warrant number 25, 252547, it's appointed attorneys for Roger Ortiz?
2547.
Yeah, it's on page 28.
That is, that is Roger Ortiz Jr., I believe.
Okay. So it's not our, it's not our Roger?
No.
All right. Thought you were now double dipping as an attorney now, okay.
His son's a lawyer.
Okay, well, now I know.
And he gets paid.
I gotta ask questions, I don't know.
(laughing).
All right. Okay, thank you. Anything else? Do I hear motion? Oh, let me ask you a question on the, as we know, we're closed today and tomorrow officially. What is it that is being done to pay the employees that are not on direct deposit today or tomorrow?
We've run the checks and they are in the Treasurer's office. I, I'm not sure with how the Treasurer's gonna handle that.
David? I mean, you've already made arrangements with these folks to pick up their checks tomorrow or something?
(inaudible).
Okay, got it.
I'll go with you door to door and deliver them.
Thank you.
All right. Do I hear motion to approve claims?
So moved.
Move by Commissioner Sanchez, second by Commissioner Benavides. Please note my abstention of the affidavits that I provided. Also, please note the Commissioner Hernandez's abstention on warrant number 252431, and he'll provide an affidavit for you next week. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Adam Carries, with the noted abstentions. Approval of minutes, January the 6th, 2011. Court had offered you to read the minutes, ready for approval?
So moved.
Move by Commissioner Gatzah, do I have a second?
Second.
By Commissioner Sanchez. Any further discussion? All those in favor please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Adam Carries. Item D, discussion and possible action regarding the amendment of the continuing disclosure agreement with Stadien Hall Sign Company. Pete or Marta, were you able to justify the doubling of the, of the fee just that they're charging? Did you try to negotiate something cheaper?
We did not, I did not try to negotiate anything cheaper. They have been charging the 2,500 for some time. They're in compliance with all the new federal regulations that are being enacted and put in place by the SEC Commission and everything. There are a number of additional advisories that the county has to comply with, with all the bond issues.
Is it twice the work now, which justifies twice the amount that we're paying?
There are a number that they do have to comply. There is all sorts of IRS guidelines that need to be followed as well and they keep us in, in line with all the requirements that are needed for the different issuances that the county issues.
So you're okay with it paying them that?
Yes.
Double? All right. Do I hear motion by Commissioner Gatzah? Do I have a second?
Second.
By Commissioner Benavides. Any further discussion? All those in favor please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Adam Carries. Item E, consideration, possible action to approve road and bridge fund equipment list for financing? Marta?
After our discussion with Luis Ada, it was, he presented us a list that had been agreed upon among the Commissioners Court as to the equipment that they wanted to purchase. This will use all the available funding for the equipment that Road and Bridge has available. I believe the Commissioners have had an opportunity to review it and they're all in agreement with this.
So y'all are okay with this? This is the last hurrah for equipment for this fiscal year?
Mr. Ada is here as well.
I, I had a chance to meet with Mr. Ada and he answered all my questions.
Okay. Ready to move, to move forward?
Move.
Is that a motion?
So moved.
Move by Commissioner Sanchez, second by Commissioner Gatzah. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Adam Carries. Item F, discussion, possible action regarding the appointment of Commissioner Hernandez and County Treasurer David Betancourt to the Audit Review Committee. My only concern, and I think, Sophie, you're acquiescing to, to Commissioner Hernandez, which is good. My only concern is the, is the Treasurer. When I spoke to Carlos Barrera and, and the auditor, they, they had a concern about having the Treasurer on as the Audit Committee because his is a fee office. If y'all wanna appoint him to that, that's okay, but it's not recommendation by our external auditor. If y'all wanna speak to him, you know, please be free to call him.
Because it's a what office?
It's a fee office.
What does that mean?
It's a fee office. You take money in.
What, Judge?
Fee office, like, it's not even a JP--
Oh, like a JP type?
Like a JP type.
So what was the difference now as to when your, Eddie Onzalis used to sit on it?
I don't know. I didn't appoint the Audit Committee back then. I wasn't--
Well, I'm, I'm still gonna move forward with it. I move to approve.
Okay, I have a motion by, by Commissioner--
I mean, just because he's on the committee doesn't mean that they can't do audits, right? That's true.
I'm just, I'm just telling you, conveying what the external auditor told me and told Marta and told everybody else, so that's it. Do I hear a motion by Commissioner Benavides, second by Commissioner Gatzah? Any further discussion? All those in favor please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Adam Carries. Item G, consideration, possible action regarding reimbursement from FEMA. Robert?
Judge Commissioners, as of our last meeting for Hurricane, for Hurricane Alex, we have received a total of $112,000, $112,000, $1148. Before you, I placed a little packet just for your information. It's broken down by precinct and the roads that were identified by precinct. In each road, there, as of today, there are actually only three projects that have not been reimbursed. Unfortunately, Commissioner Garza, they're all in precinct 3. They're all large projects. There is actually a total of $203,000 that's, still hasn't been paid for Hurricane Alex. So we've received $1,021,000.
How much is still out for Dolly, though?
Dolly, we're still at the same judge, a little over $2 million. I believe that was 1.2? Yeah, 1.2.
On those three projects, we knew because of the amount that they were gonna be delayed, right?
That's correct. Yes, those, yeah.
The more they cost, the longer it takes.
They have a, they have a limit for--
Threshold?
They do audit or something.
Sure, makes sense.
Okay. Do I hear motion to acknowledge?
So moved.
Move by Commissioner Gatzah, second by Commissioner Benavides. Any further discussion? All those in favor please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Adam Carries. Item A, consideration, approval to appoint and reappoint three members of the RMA for a term of two years?
Yes, yes, Judge.
Which terms are upon those?
On the two, I'm only, I'm only gonna talk about the two-year terms. I'll make a motion to reappoint Ruben Gallegos, David Garza, the current David Garza sits on the RMA, and Michael Skeef.
So moved. Second.
Okay, that was a motion by, by Commissioner Hernandez, second by Commissioner Gatzah. Any further discussion? All those in favor please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Adam Carries. Item A, consideration, approval to appoint and reappoint three members of the RMA term for one year. Which three members are those?
The one-year terms?
The ones that expired last year.
Yeah, okay, the ones that are still pending, that's Poncho and Yolanda, and who else? And, okay, and you have--
Oh, yeah.
Okay, are you gonna, are you gonna reappoint? Are you gonna point--
I'm going to make a motion to appoint John Wood, Marcus Parsan, Yolanda Villalobos.
Okay, do I, I have a motion to appoint, okay, hold on, hold on, wait a minute. Are we changing the, the policy in terms of having each member of the court appoint a member with the county judge appointing two? That was a gentleman's agreement that was done back before I got, got on here. Is that gonna change now where it's a majority of the court's gonna appoint?
That's, that's my motion, Judge.
No, no, I'm, I'm asking--
If that changes it, then that is what it is.
Are we changing the policy? Going away from the gentleman's agreement that we had?
From, from the original inception of the RMA, each Commissioner has always appointed one individual and the county judge has appointed two individuals. And that was just a gentleman's agreement that we did when we put the requirements or the bylaws or whatever together. We did not include that in the bylaws, okay? It was just, you know-- It was just, you know, we respected each other's appointments, we respected, you know, I mean, and that was the way we did it. And, uh, that was the way it worked.
Going forward, I would concur and make a second on her motion. Let majority, uh, rule on this one.
Okay, I had a motion by Commissioner Benavides, second by Commissioner Hernandez to, to change the, I guess, the way the court's been doing this since ninety-five or ninety-six. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay?
I oppose. I think that the spirit of this court in continuity of what the RMA represents to our region has been one in which we respected that, you know, and I think that, I don't have a problem with whoever serves and I will support whoever serves. But for whatever reason, when we formed this RMA, the intent of Commissioners Court was that the judge was an elected official that represented all the county. And we each had our precincts. And he was given that opportunity for two members when approved by the re, just like my member, when, you know, whoever I appoint has to be agreed upon by every commi, or not everybody, at least the majority of the commissioners on Commissioners Court. You know, and I think that, uh, if we want to change that, we probably should do something to change how we're gonna do it. I mean, if, if we're gonna be elect, you know, cause I would hate for whoever would come after me to, to come in and say, well, you don't even have an opportunity to appoint that person, you know? And we have that that occurs, like in the housing authority board. We have that, there's other boards out there that each one of us, because of historical ways of doing things, you know, not that there's a procedure or a policy in place, that, you know, and I'll give you one prime example, you know? Judge Romero passed away recently and he is on the EMS board. And that position has been in the past, an appointment of the precinct three commissioner, okay? So are we gonna start doing that with all the boards where, you know, I mean, whoever? And, and that's, you know, I mean, that's just a question that I have because the housing authority has a few positions that are coming up that we need to look at. Are we gonna agree to a gentleman's agreement as to how we do it or are we gonna just whoever we want appoint?
I, I can't answer that right now. I don't think that's an item on the agenda for us to be discussing. But I would like, I would certainly agree to make it in a public discussion, you know, for maybe the next meeting.
Okay.
Okay, all we have is the point.
Yeah, cause we need to, we need to kinda like figure out, you know? I had planned to bring that item up in the next meeting anyway because of its passing and I says, well, I gotta ask somebody to come on that.
Okay. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Have I done that? Either it's three, three yays, two nays, all in favor, blah, blah, blah. Okay, it's cold. Do I hear motion to adjourn?
Do we do publicly comment, Judge?
Yeah, we did, but there's nobody there.
So moved.
Move by Commissioner Hernandez, second by Commissioner Gatsa to adjourn. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, item carries. God save this honorable court. Y'all stay warm.